All right, calling to order the City of West Sacramento Regular Meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, the West Sacramento Redevelopment Successor Agency, and the West Sacramento Finance Authority, February 20, 2013. We did meeting closed session. We discussed existing litigation, West Sacramento versus Department of Finance in Yolo County, and also we discussed substantial exposure to litigation. No action was taken on either of those items. All right, we'll start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance that will be led by Dan Ramos.
All right, we're going to proceed to presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda. We're precluded by state law from discussing items that are not on the agenda. It looks like we have one speaker tonight, Bill Lowell.
Testing? Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, William Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record. I'm still wondering what kind of action is going to be taken regarding the designing or redesigning of the corner there at 15th Street and Jefferson Boulevard when a new bridge would come over from Broadway on the other side and come out 15th Street on our side, because that existing 15th Street, I don't think could handle freeway traffic eastbound past our fire station there at 15th and Alabama. Either we're going to do it like maybe we did at the east end of Park Boulevard and not allow left-turn traffic to come in there, but then that would make traffic go even slower from that side. But I understand we are considering extending and widening what used to be South River Road up over the Barge Canal and tie it in with, I think it's called Valley Drive to the south, which ends at Lake Washington Boulevard in the Southport area. So maybe we would have a flow of traffic going over the barge that way and reduce the traffic on Jefferson Boulevard somewhat. So that will be a partial solution, if you will. But I still like the idea of a Southport-South Sacramento Bridge, because that would especially give our Southport neighbors better access to and from hospitals and other medical care that they don't enjoy now. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Lowell. All right, moving on to council communications and assignments, are there any communications from council?
Just one, just one very briefly. The West Sacramento JPA Flood Control, WesACFA, met last Thursday, and the major item of discussion was the possibility of combining the GRR in West Sacramento and the GRR that's going through the process in Sacramento. WesACSAFA had a number of questions, and staff seems to be really ahead of, ahead of the curve, so to speak, and they are looking very diligently at making sure that there are no delays, making sure that none of the issues that may bog down, we'll say Sacramento, affect West Sacramento. So I think staff's doing a very good job of keeping track of that, and it's something that, of course, we're going to keep a very, very close eye on.
Thank you, Mr. Kristof. Mr. Vegas?
Thank you. The Yolo County Transportation District met actually February 11th. As I go through, I don't recall, there's nothing too exciting that happened at that meeting, so I'll leave that be. On February 13th, the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District met, and we received an update on the technology. So I've been keeping the council posted on the work that's happening with the expansion of the plant, the $2 billion expansion of the plant that has to be completed by 2021. And so part of what's happening now is that there is a series of work being done to experiment with different technologies that are going to be used as part of this master growth of the plant. And so we're getting a series of updates on that. And the good news is that it appears that there may be a reduction of costs associated with the plant. I guess when you're talking about $2 billion plant, a couple hundred million here and a couple hundred million there, doesn't really add up to a whole lot, but it is important that we continue to stay on budget, certainly on budget and on time. So that was good news. And we also received an updated Regional Sanitation District Business Plan for 2013-14 as part of this sort of movement towards that 2021 date. We need to keep a close eye on all the costs associated with this project and all the essential components. And so we received an updated business plan, which is actually a very good plan. It's actually very easy, user-friendly, very easy to read and to understand. So that's it.
Thank you. And the Yolo County Sono, Yolo-Sono Air Quality Management District met on February 13th. The most significant item discussed there was the ongoing regulatory effort on mobile agricultural equipment. The issue is going to be replacement cost, and they are looking at coming up with regulations by the end of the year.
All right, council appointments and reappointments, there are none tonight. Item 1C, moving on to the consent agenda, items 2 through 7, are there any items council wishes to pull or have any particular comments? I've got one card to speak on item number five. Five, and I have a question on three.
Two and three for me.
Okay. Item two, consideration of modifications to the 2012-2013 budget and authorized position lists and related personnel actions. I note that the city manager has provided a update to this agenda item.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the update is really just a error in a salary that we gave you in the original attachment, so we corrected that salary. And the memo indicated that this new reclassified position, that there would be a provisional appointment. We have a number of people who, under our personnel rules, may choose to apply for a position once we've created it, so we're going to provisionally make an appointment, which the city manager is allowed to do, and then we will open a recruitment at the appropriate time.
So, so Phil, on the personnel actions, on the third page of the staff report, it says that the positions that are going to be used for what would potentially be the Riverfront Hotel are extended through December 31st. Then what would, so how does that play out after that? What would be the intended, I mean, what staffing resources are?
So the intended goal, and this has been communicated to the three people in these positions by their manager. We have, as you know, some important projects going on right now that, because of the budget two years ago, we created a limited-term position. We extended it for a year because we had the money. We are going to be evaluating, as part of the upcoming budget, whether we can make those back to regular positions in the next two-year budget. But we're not at a point where we know that today. Obviously, as somebody comes up at the end of their limited term, if they think their job might be going away, they're going to start looking, and these are critical staff. We wanted to tell them, don't look, you're here for at least nine months, and we're going to be looking to see whether we can turn these back to regular positions as part of the budget, but we're not ready to make that commitment today.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number three, community development housing, consideration of a three-year contract to continue funding for the homeless coordination project. Mr. Kristof.
Hey, Luis. I was just wondering, how many people are at the Wayfair Center from West Sacramento? We pay for about 11 beds.
Well, the homeless coordination contract pays for about 11 beds, but that's funded equally by West Sacramento, Woodland, Davis, and Yolo County. So technically, we fund four or five beds. We probably use at least half of those 11 beds for West Sacramento residents on a regular basis. So they do see quite a few people coming from West Sacramento to the shelter.
Thank you. All right. Question on that, actually.
Okay. Thank you. Luis, actually, I had a question, a follow-up question as well. So in the agreement, the, under section one, there isn't any reference to, so it talks about the work that would be done to improve services, obviously, and then increase funding for local agencies for homelessness, and then the efficiency, but it doesn't talk anything at all about the impact of the neighbors, which we're hearing a lot about, and I just want to make sure. So in terms of this agreement, and I guess maybe I'm, I just need some clarity about what this, what will, what will result in our supporting this effort in light of the recent proposal, or at least the rumor that the Broderick Christian Center looks to expand and wants to add a sizable facility in the neighborhood. And I, so is, so is, obviously, there's going to be a connection between the work that's going on here, the recommendations that are going to come before the council, and what Broderick Christian Center is thinking about doing. Is that, do I have that right?
It's more than thinking. They have received a $1 million grant from the state for reconstructing a facility where the building that burned down was located, that will include overnight shelter, and they have submitted plans for that. So they're moving forward with that development. The homeless coordination project that you have before you this evening is not directly related to Broderick Christian Center, except for the fact that the halftime homeless coordinator for Yolo County does assist with grant writing for all homeless programs in Yolo County.
Okay, so maybe I'm jumping to making the connection, and I just want to be mindful that, and I mean, I think I support what's being proposed through this evening, but I am concerned that in the interest of, in light of what the work is or the scope shows, that there isn't that consideration that I certainly have. I want to have some say, or at least some dialogue about the proposal, and I know we're limited in what we can say, and maybe it's a bit of a reach with this item, but with respect to what I think this council talked about about a year ago, when it was still rumored about the expansion of those services, I am concerned about the impacts to the neighborhood, and I'm not convinced that we're, that it's the right thing yet. I mean, I might be convinced, but I certainly want to have some dialogue about that, because I've received numerous concerns and questions that are legitimate, and we've just not had that vetted here. But again, I understand our role, and we have some limitations on what we can say or not say about that project.
Well, Mr. Vegas, if I may, Luis, it might be appropriate to take that discussion about Broderick Christian Center to item eight. I think there might be a little better nexus, and we're prepared to talk about the project then.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that I'm not setting the stage for what then becomes more difficult conversation to have. But I think, so I think in understanding where you're trying to take this, I'd support what you're proposing. Thanks.
All right. Item number five, we have one comment to speak on that. Dan Ramos?
I'm here representing a family property, a rental car, and they do a truck truck. Wanted to make sure that we're very clear that the property is all very supportive of this project and understand what's going on here. There's a bridge, there's funds that are coming to play here, there's some support that we can build, and there's comments, I suppose, to comments in terms of how this company is forward, probably means that next phase of this project will be possible to connect to Southport, and that will drive them out of that, in terms of two-year gap. I think this is about a positive, southern of Southport, in terms of the scale, and the rest of the areas, and the transition, and the condition, we're going to be there to go about, because the way companies, the way this, the way Congress, I think, are very concerned with this, traffic will increase on this, and West Sacramento, there's no way to complete a connection. I support that also, and if we look at how the coverage is there, which we transition out of this, I feel like there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of, you have trucks, and then, and then, obviously, there's a lot of, and trucks making, that can, there's a cross, a crossbar, so having some sensitivity, remember how we go with this, with traffic, which is very, very important to us. I think I want to compliment you, to be a big, a big, we just made this, we had this happen, this great, great, and there's, 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 there's a lot of, 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 there's Well, our housing rehab program, our single-family rehab's maximum loan is, I think, $70,000, so we can do several loans with that per year.
Okay. I see where you're going. Okay.
I do, but I'm not sure at what point is the best time to ask them. I'll just sit tight until the end.
All right.
Okay. And the final item is the use of a program income waiver, provided the council approves that the program income reuse plan with the waiver option. And in the city's budget, both last year and the current fiscal year, we had funded Fair Housing Services and the Homeless Coordination Project contract from CDBG program income, but we've been restricted by HCD from using that because they had initiated this waiver process that has taken much longer than they told us it would to get approval for. Now that we have approval to use it for these two activities, we're asking for council approval. This requires the revocation of a previous resolution from two years, almost two years ago, which is Resolution 1180, because that mentioned both fair housing and landlord tenant services. We're asking that that, the new resolution fund only fair housing so that our second activity can be used for the Homeless Coordination Project contract.
Louise?
Yes.
Is this homeless coordination contract, is it the same as number three, agenda item number three?
Yes.
For the homeless coordinator?
Yes.
Okay. Because I have some issues, just like Mr. Viegas does. I mean, a lot of rumors flying around town that Broderick Christian Center wants to expand to 40 rooms, 45 rooms, or whatever it is for overnight housing. And it certainly has a number of people in the Broderick area very, very upset. I realize that there are some state rules and regulations that prohibit us from interfering, but at the same time, we have to be aware of what's going on over there. Those poor people are, you know, they're fixing up their house, they're fixing up their yards, they're investing in the community, and then they get hit with a, the possibility of a facility that just really creates havoc with a lot of communities. I'm not saying this one would, and I'm not saying all of them do, but all we have to do is look across the river. And we see what is happening with loaves and fishes and some of the other things. I mean, and it's sad to what has happened to that portion of their city, as far as driving businesses away and causing confrontation with property owners and residents and different things. And I don't want that to happen here. And somehow or another, I need to have the assurances that is not going to happen here. What are the policies that are going to be put in place if something like that wants to locate in the Broderick Christian Center site?
So, I just want to point out that the Yolo County homeless coordinator is really an indirect issue with regard to Broderick Christian Center. That serves the whole county, and it's much more than that. And it's not going to have, approval of that contract or the funding for that contract isn't going to change any circumstances with regard to Broderick Christian Centers.
But it should. I mean, he's the homeless coordinator. He should have some influence over Broderick Christian, at least I think he should, over Broderick Christian Center, how they operate.
The homeless coordinator's position is a Yolo County position, and her primary responsibilities are twofold. One is to provide service providers with information. So she does a lot of training, she does a lot of consultation with HUD to make sure that the service providers in Yolo County are aware of HUD changes and HUD rules and best practices. Her second function, which is to be a coordinator for the HUD grants that require regional coordination, bringing in hundreds of thousands of dollars every year. So in that, in that sense, she assists Broderick Christian Center, but she's not, she's not their director, she's not over their board. Yolo County does have some contracts with Broderick Christian Center, but the homeless coordinator is not involved in those contracts.
But I get what you're saying, and I think we can, we've heard your concerns on that regard, and we can maybe explore what options there might be through Yolo County Services to try to bring about some better ways of providing those services in our city. And that's also part of our homeless study, which is reported in here about the funds that were going to be used on that study that you asked us to look into last year, and we're moving on that. And that's more directly related to the Broderick Christian Center. And I can tell you that it's, it's not a rumor, they have officially submitted for building permit plans. It is for an overnight shelter, which is different than the one that burned down. The one that burned down in 2010 was day-use shelter. They did receive a grant for the building, the reconstruction. The grant requires, we've been told, the grant requires 43?
When they submitted the grant, it was for 43 beds.
For 43 beds.
And I believe that's in their contract unless it's been amended by the state, which, unless they requested an amendment.
And our review of the current plans that have been submitted, and we just issued plan check comments back to their architect today, is that we're questioning whether or not they can accommodate that under the building and fire code. Our calculations show that it would fall substantially short of that.
Absolutely. For what, a million dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we've asked for them to provide more information, we continue to try to meet with them, and they have been meeting with us. We've tried to encourage them to orient the building differently so that there's more of an interior courtyard, so that their clientele that come to receive services are not loitering or in other people's yards. So they have had some staffing changes, and we're trying to keep the dialogue up and trying to influence where we can better development. But they are permitted by right in the R2 zone, and we, beyond the building and fire code, we don't really have the ability to impose any further development standards on them, especially given Senate Bill Two. But the dialogue remains open, and I think the city manager and I are going to try to schedule another meeting with them, especially given our review of the current building plans.
Are there any city general fund monies or any city monies going into the project, or has there been a request from the Broderick Christian Center for that to happen?
There are no monies going into the building. Last year, they did request that the city apply for CDBG funding, and we did not do that. I don't know if they requested this year.
They did, we did have one conversation where they said they felt like they would need more operational funds for staffing, but they never came back with additional comments or interest. They did not show up at the workshop that the state held for CDBG funds that was in winters a week ago, two weeks ago, which I thought they were going to be at. So, I'm, at this point in time, I don't think they're asking for additional funds. However, they have expressed a need for additional funds.
And that would come to the council, though?
If we were to put them in the CDBG application, absolutely, that has to be a council resolution.
So, so, thank you, Louise. I know this is, they're super complicated. I know you put a lot of time and energy in trying to figure out how to manage all these different pots of money. I just want to reiterate my earlier concern, because you've identified under the 2013 CDBG priorities, under the other activities to be considered, homeless services, and in fact, it says in here that they've asked for funds. And so, but within the same paragraph, it says, the results of the study that we're doing are not complete, so we don't have recommendations yet. So I guess it, I'm just concerned about putting the cart before the horse a bit here. So if we don't have the study that we're paying for that's going to tell us what we ought to be doing, I'm certainly not interested in going down that path and not funding a program. But I think, in my opinion, is again, so broad-based, it's not focused, and I really think that without an end game to what our strategy is, the notion of just creating 43 beds for, I don't know if it's for anybody, but I would really rather have the conversation here to say, we need to focus our efforts and be strategic about the folk, the target area, whether it's women and children, or it's foster youth, or it's veterans, or is it just anybody? And is it just anybody who sometimes doesn't want a bed, and so now they're just going to hang out? And so those are the concerns that I have that I think have to be brought to this council for consideration, certainly if we're going to get in bed with an applicant that applies for funding and doesn't have the full plan, as you said, laid all the way out. We've only been successful up here largely because we're thoughtful and methodical as we partner with folks who are, have an end game in mind, not just simply partnering to be collaborative and to do those kinds of things. So I just, I know I'm sharing with you what you already know, but I really don't want to go down a path where we're pigeonholed into supporting a project that is so unwieldy and unfocused that we contribute to the neighborhood problems that have been clearly articulated, at least to me, they have been. So, and I completely agree. I just think going down this path, supporting that, even if just in the way that it's laid out here, we're going to just, we're going to contribute to the problem and not more focused effort fix it. And I know there's a end, a perfect solution to it, but I just want to be mindful of the fact that the neighborhood is saturated with a lot of problems, and housing is not, we're not, they're not short on affordable, very, very low and very affordable 400-square-foot studio apartments that if our interest was to provide, you know, shelter, we're almost doing that on the natural, given the number of affordable and very, very affordable units in that immediate proximity. So I just want to continue to express my concern as we had it, I think, about a year ago here at the council. So I just want to continue to make sure that stays on the radar.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I'll chime in as well. I think it really shows the need to have the study of what's going on in West Sacramento to help us articulate what we're doing here, and that we can't move forward without having some kind of information as to what, you know, what it looks like for us on council to be able to help both the neighbors who are obviously having an issue here, and also what we're going to be doing about the homeless situation anyway. You know, my suggestion would be to engage the folks that are really vocal about what's happening in our neighborhoods and bring them in to the conversation and the strategy so they can be part of the solution and not, so their voices are heard in the appropriate forum.
Our intent is to have the consultants do several meetings, at least two or three meetings, with residents in that area because they are highly impacted by homelessness, and they have, they have expressed their concern, and we want to address that.
Very good. Anything else before the public hearing?
May I? I'm sorry, I'm out of order, but I forgot to mention one thing. The Economic Development Advisory Commission met last night, and therefore their recommendation was not in the staff report, but I just want to let you know that they did approve the staff recommendations. However, they voiced concern that we focus our CDBG funds on projects that are in the city council's strategic plan. Most of the strategic plan items this year are very large projects that really, the whole project may not be CDBG-eligible, but pieces of it might be as we get further down along the road. But at this time, we don't see that any of those would be directly eligible. They also asked to be informed that if the, if any other programs or projects are identified this evening, that we forward that information to them so that they can be aware of that.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we're going to open the item up for public hearing. This allows anybody here who would like to speak on this item to come forward. Seeing none, closing the public hearing and referring the council for further deliberation or motion. Okay, we have a motion to move the arm to Mr. Viegas?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Against? No. Okay. Motion passed as staff recommendation. All right, on to item nine. This is a public hearing and consideration of Resolutions 13-15 and 13-16, authorizing the city manager to execute an installation contract with Siemens Building Technology Division to retrofit city-owned streetlights and a financing lease for the streetlight program with PNC Equipment Financing. Mr. Fabian?
Good evening, council. This evening, staff has requested that you listen to a short presentation by Paul Douglas from Siemens Building Technology. Open the public hearing to consider Resolutions 13-15 and 16. Making a finding and entering into an energy service contract is within, with Siemens is in the best interest of the city. Authorize the city manager to complete negotiations with Siemens and authorize the city manager or designate to enter into the master equipment lease purchase agreement with PNC Financial to finance the project. With that, if you could bring up the presentation, I'd like to introduce Paul Douglas from Siemens Building.
Thank you, Paul. Members of the council and city staff, thanks for the opportunity to present. As an employer in West Sacramento and, you know, with several offices, we'd be proud to be a partner with the city to enter into this project. If, you going to put the slides up, or? Great, thank you. I promise I'll be brief. You can go to the next slide. Why streetlights? Certainly, Paul Dirksen did a great job. Really, I can say that he has set a great standard for looking at streetlights as an energy savings measure for the city, and also reaching out to the city to have them input in terms of what sort of streetlights they would be interested in. And it's something that we're going to use for a number of different cities out here in Northern California. But generally speaking, why? We're looking at saving energy. I mean, it's essentially an opportunity to reduce energy. PG&E endorses it with reduced rates for the city, and it's certainly a longer carbon footprint, lower carbon footprint for the city on top of improved public safety. Next slide. So what we're talking about here is really no upfront costs whatsoever on the part of the city. The entire project, the debt, amortization of the debt, and the construction is financed by the energy savings. So the energy savings are coming through rebates from PG&E and also a reduced rate on the part of going from high-pressure sodium to LED streetlights. So if you entered into a contract with Siemens, we'd be turnkey sole-source accountability for this project. We have extensive experience in terms of working with public works, with their oversight. We always say it's the city's project, it's not our project. We recognize public safety, that we don't want to impede traffic, and really come through in terms of the full project being completed with no change orders, a firm fixed price for the city. The other important thing is that we've negotiated a tremendous rate, which will be 3% or less, and also, we will certainly use local contractors. We believe in providing as the general contractor, providing opportunities for local contractors to be our subs. So it helps local job creation as well as reducing energy and addressing AB32. Next slide. Just a little bit about what we've done in the past. Cities like Millbrae, Cupertino, Merced, and Vacaville have already entered into agreements with Siemens for energy performance contracts. On top of that, and included in that are LED streetlights. Certainly, with all the new technology innovations, it's really something to capitalize upon. We currently provide maintenance for over 380,000 streetlights. Next slide. So just the value prop, it's certainly a 37% savings with LED. It's a $1.4 million project, positive cash flow from year one, only positive impact of the general fund. You're going to harvest a rebate of $383,000 from PG&E, and we're a local company and we want to use local contractors for the project. That's basically it. This is just an example. We'd love to put Mayor Cabaldin up in a truck and install lights, but, you know, we did this PR example in the city of Merced. We showed it all the local contractors that we used for the entire city project and had a special event. And I think it's really important to show and illustrate, especially when we think about the whole about the whole Greenwise joint venture, and Julia Burrows, I believe, is going to speak about that, but it's really a leadership position that West Sacramento can, can deliver. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
So the real trick will be if, can you get them hoisted up really high and then drive them around town like that? If you can stay in there, that's, that'll be the real trick.
There you go.
Question on, on the, the high-pressure sodium and the lumens with the LED, what is the comparable? Because I noticed in the staff report, there could be more light poles put in to accommodate this.
Yes, sir. We make sure that the lumens are at city standards. So generally speaking, the LED is just such improved technology that the lumens will be less in terms of wattage, but the overall, it's a white light as opposed to a yellow light. Public safety, I mean, there's a lot of very comprehensive studies that we can provide that show that LED are much improved in terms of just the overall visibility for nighttime as well as recognizing colors, recognizing people's faces. So for, for your fire and police people, I mean, certainly be a huge asset. But as far as, you're not going to require any more poles or any more installation in terms of, you can use the existing ones.
Okay, great. You have a question?
Yeah, so, 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 I mean, obviously, I know the attorneys have looked at all the legal language to make sure that, that the city is in a good position with this. So functionally, you, you just actually go out, you replace these lights. I know you've done some studies to show that the lighting, the neighbors that have used, I think somewhere in the staff report it said, those neighbors that had them replaced in their neighborhoods actually thought it was just as good or better than the lights they had before. So, so, unless I've misspoken?
Oh, absolutely. No, that's correct.
And so, so these are the lights that stay, I mean, because it seems like some lights, and I don't know if by design, or they're just going out, they just go out after a while, I mean, certain times of the day, evening, they just go out? And I don't know if that's by design or?
That is not by design. That's a lot of times the old photocells.
Okay.
So the installation will not only be the LED fixture, but also the photocells that capture the light that will, that will turn them on during the day. And also, we find over and over, no, all due respect to PG&E, we find all kinds of issues. We will do a comprehensive audit with GPS at each individual location and make sure that each one of them are working, and also that the city is being built properly for the lights that they own.
Yeah, so your, your, your point about, with all due respect, so the, the, because we have a lot of streetlights, it seems like the last couple of years, and you know, the copper thefts that have been occurring, so we have a lot of lights that just don't work at all. And those are sort of on the way on the low end of their priority list. And, you know, the ones that do burn out, obviously, they're, they're changing them as, as they go along. But you're not talking about doing it citywide, these, so there's?
We're talking about the city-owned streetlights to start with. In our audit, we will identify, clearly identify which ones are owned by PG&E and which ones are owned by the city. But certainly Phase Two, you know, that's certainly for Paul Dirksen and Public Works to work on in terms of that negotiation with PG&E, in terms of looking at ownership of those other lights.
The other ones?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
My pleasure.
Chris, no? Any further questions? Mr. Dirksen, anything further?
Excuse me?
Anything further?
Paul covered a lot of the issues. I just want to make sure that you understand, I mean, so they are looking at local vendors. Republic is our standard vendor, which they're looking at, also Collins Electric. We will have the last say, you know, they're going to bring, they're going to actually ask them to submit a proposal, but, you know, we'll have a opportunity to participate in that ultimate selection process. You know, I wanted to emphasize the fact that we have had ongoing dialogues with PG&E about what their programs are. So PG&E has a program for city-owned streetlights, but not for their own, kind of ironic. So we're trying to get them to budge on that a little bit. Ongoing conversations with Siemens is that there may be opportunities to, to try to ramp up the conversations with Siemens in tow, to try to make that happen. I just want to let you know that if, if this gets approved this evening, what will happen is that Siemens will go out and conduct an audit. We will, we've been working with the city attorney's office to finalize the contract language, most of which is dealing with liability and insurance issues. And then they'll assist with the rebate applications, and they'll commence oring the lamps. John Sneed is in the audience this evening. He will be, he will be the project manager for the on-the-ground installation. And I think that concludes all I have, unless you have any other further questions.
No, I can't, no, I'm sorry. Now, I can't imagine you're going to conclude your presentation without bringing up Julia Burrows from Greenwise to say something about the project.
I think she's going to comment during the public hearing.
Ah, okay, all right. So she's not part of the official presentation, right? Just checking, all right.
Paul, how, with all the studies and things that are done upfront, and all of the upfront legwork, so to speak, what's the lag time before they get reimbursed? Before Siemens gets reimbursed? What's the lag time before that? Because the staff report says there won't be any upfront cost for the city, so I have to assume that there's nothing there. Is it that the first year there is very, very little positive cash flow as far as the city's concerned? Or is it, and then it grows as more and more lights are put in and all the other things?
So a couple of pieces to the question, I think. So once we sign a contract, Siemens will probably mobilize within two weeks to three weeks to go out and do the inventory. PNC Financial will deposit the money into an escrow account.
Okay.
It's very similar to our residential rehab program.
Exactly.
As Siemens makes milestones, we will make milestone payments against the, the progress that they've made in the installation.
All right. Thank you. Just a quick comment on the audit. I think that's, it'd be helpful if we could identify which poles are which. I know we've, over the years, we've had discussions about whose light pole is, is a PG&E or the city. I think this would be a good opportunity to actually mark those things to, so the residents can tell whether it's a PG&E pole or a city pole.
Yeah, I don't know if it's going to be that distinguishable to residents, because we would like uniformity throughout the city.
Or something on?
But the fact is that our GIS system holds the ownership, will hold the ownership when Siemens is completed. So once the audit is completed, that information will then be re-uploaded into our GIS system.
Great, great. Anything else? All right, thank you, Mr. Dirksen. All right, we're going to open up the public hearing. Anybody who would like to speak on this matter, please come forward.
I'm Julia Burrows. I'm the president and executive director of Greenwise Joint Venture, and it's an honor to be at your council meeting this evening. I run a regional nonprofit that's working to transform our region into the greenest in the country and a hub for clean technology, and it's projects just like this that are going to help our region do that. And I have to say, I go to a lot of meetings to talk about doing projects. It is so nice to be at a meeting where you're actually going to do a project, and you're taking action to do that. Your streetlight project is a perfect example of leadership. I love the local job angle, and I know you have Barbara Hayes here, and we both sit here and nod our heads, thank you, for growing the green economy in the region. You're going to save your taxpayers and your taxpayers' money, you're going to reduce emissions, so complying with SB 375 and AB 32. And the demonstration of the LED technology is something that we will watch. You have a partner in UC Davis Energy Efficiency. I know Siemens works with them. So you'll be demonstrating that for the rest of the region. And you're a local government leading by example. So your action tonight puts you ahead of your neighbors to the north, the east, and the west, and we will shine a spotlight on this to encourage through peer pressure the other cities to do exactly this project. So I'm here tonight to congratulate you on this fantastic energy efficiency project. Your timeline in going from the conversations to the action tonight beats every other of the 21 cities in this region, and so thank you for taking action to transform our region. I really, really appreciate it, as does Greenwise and the entire region. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Julia, we're not really that competitive, but thank you for sharing how, how?
Oh, yes, you are. Best Sacramento I have heard in many meetings where other mayors have been. So we will be happy to shine that spotlight and make sure the other cities follow your lead.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, closing the public hearing, refraining the council for deliberation or emotion, and noting that we have an updated resolution 13.6 in the handout. I would move the item, including the updated attachment. Mr. Chris off second. Sol in favor? Aye. Posed? No? Okay, that motion passes. All right, on to item number 10. Consideration of Resolution 13-10 authorizing the execution delivery of a fiscal agent agreement, a bond purchase contract, an escrow agreement, and a continuing disclosure agreement authorizing the issuance of bonds, approving the form of the official statement and distribution thereof, and approval of the related actions. Mr. Bluebird?
Well, we, we brought this item to you on January 23rd and gave you the overview of the savings that we could achieve by refunding bonds that are outstanding in CFD 20 or the Bridgeway Lakes Two subdivision. So tonight's action, you know, is to approve resolution 13, or adopt Resolution 13-10, which approves various actions that will allow us to issue what we call the 2012, or 2013 refunding bonds. So just a couple of things I'd, again, reiterate about, about this refinancing. It would not extend the term of the debt beyond the existing term, which is 2035. That's a big goal of ours, always not to kick the can down the road in terms of our terms on our refinancing. And then also, there's also the condition in your action tonight that the, the savings have to exceed 3% net present value. And so, you know, things always fluctuate from, from week to week, particularly when you do a deal like this, it's going to be a, a, a market rate deal and really subject to whatever's going on in the municipal market at the time that we go for sale. So right now, we're, we're planning to do the bond sale a week from now, exactly a week from now, and we hope to, to, to do well. But again, we'll, we'll get back to you at the, the end of the sale to let you know what our actual savings are. So with that, you know, tonight's action is again requesting approval of the issuance of the refunding bonds and various actions approving execution of documents that are associated with that refunding.
Well, thank you. Any comments from council?
Nope. Pretty good. Always good.
All right. I'd move the action. Second? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Posed? No? Okay, motion carries. All right, thank you, Mr. Bluebird. All right, on to item 11. Consideration of Resolution 13-9 supporting the Next Economy Capital Region Prosperity Plan. And who is, this is Ernesto.
Good evening, council. Tonight, we bring forward the economic development strategy for the Sacramento region called Next Economy, and ask the council to consider adopting Resolution 13-9 in support of the Next Economy Capital Region Prosperity Plan. The Next Economy effort began back in 2011 with various public-private partners coming together to focus on, on ways to accelerate job creation and investment in the region. And this, this plan highlights many of those, many of those actions. And tonight, we have Barbara Hayes, president and CEO of Sacto, and she's joining us this evening to give a short presentation about the Next Economy and where that is today, and she can answer any questions.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. For the record, Barbara Hayes with Sacto. It's an honor to be here. As Ernesto mentioned, about 18 months ago, a group of business and community leaders got together and realized that the Sacramento region in general had been especially hard hit by the, what is now called the Great Recession, and that if we were going to control our destiny, so to speak, coming out of it, we needed to all be pulling in the same direction as a region to accomplish unified goals. So what started out of a dinner discussion, quite literally, turned into an 18-month regional planning process through which many community meetings were held, a lot of outreach, a lot of opportunities for involvement, both from the public, private sector, academia, and all parties really across the region. And what we have come to at this point in time is the development of a regional economic development strategic plan that focuses on five core areas. One is building the innovation environment. The second is increasing global market transactions, that is to say, increasing our import-export opportunities and our foreign direct investment opportunities across the region. The third component of the plan involves industry clusters and really focusing regional efforts around specific industry clusters where this region has a high degree of specialization. And there are some that I know fit right in with the city of West Sacramento's economic development strategic opportunities, such as food and egg, advanced manufacturing, information technology, and the like. The fourth component of the plan realizes that we're nothing if we don't have world-class talent to be able to provide employees for the businesses that we want to attract. So given our rich infrastructure in higher ed in the region and some of the best K-12 school districts in the state, we aim through that, this element of the plan to actually connect our educational institutions with the businesses in the region so that the students see opportunities and the businesses, quite honestly, see opportunities in the students so that we, the workforce that we're growing here in the region remains and grows. It's a large piece of that workforce component. And then the fifth component is perhaps very selfishly, a little bit of job opportunity for me, or important to what I do, is, is improving the business climate, not only in the region, but also, and perhaps most importantly, for the state of California. So what we're doing now is we've developed the plan, again, through, with lots of region-wide input, and we are going to launch the, the plan or, or release the, the plan in full publicly on March the 19th. And what we're hoping to do is get resolutions of support from all the jurisdictions in the region, as well as from private businesses in the form of teaming agreements on the private business side and in the form of resolutions of support from the local governments. So that's what we're here tonight to ask for your support. Happy to answer any questions.
Great. Any questions?
Just, just, first, thank you for coming this evening and sharing the plan. This is a great plan, and I, I remember the early conversations about it, and it's sure, certainly has grown. I love some of the, the components and the different strategies that are in here. So can you just talk a little bit about the, one of the bullets under the, the fourth, the grow and maintain world-class talent base? And I know our connections to the schools and to other organizations in the region that are working to try to make sure that we don't lose that talent base and that we continue to make sure we're, that our students are studying where the, where jobs are going to be, right? Because they talk about, fourth graders are studying for jobs that don't even exist yet, that whole idea of that.
Yeah.
So how, how do you, how do you bring the schools in? How do you make sure that they're hearing the message about what that next economy looks like?
Well, I'll answer it two ways. The first is through the development of, of a talent attraction strategy. There are regions around the U.S. that have done this before, so it's not inventing the wheel, but it's looking at ways that we can better connect the classroom learning, quite honestly, probably going down as far as junior high, all the way through our, our higher ed, connecting those students and, quite honestly, the, the teachers and professors with the businesses in the region. And likewise, taking business people and putting them into classrooms. That's kind of at the core of it. There'll be lots of different elements, but it really is connecting. And you're right, there are organizations in this region, such as Next Ed and others, who are, who are the, the experts or the front line, if you will, in this effort. The second way I'll give you an example is actually something that's happening right now in advance of the, the public launch of Next Economy, is through the work that we do at Sacto in the business recruitment side, and then together with Meg Arnold, who heads up SARDA, the Sacramento Area Regional Technology Alliance, the innovation organization, or the organization that works with startup companies. We have heard anecdotally and just recently confirmed that, and it's not going to be a surprise to anybody, that there's just a shortage of IT talent in the region. So we've recently, between Meg and myself, met with a CIO/CTO, Chief Technology, Chief Information Officer, group that Meg hosts through SARDA, and we've mapped out or identified three different areas where we can do that connecting. And to a person, and, and there are 15 businesses represented in the room, the likes of Pacific Coast and Rayleigh's, and Hewlett-Packard is in the room in a, in a very big way, to a person, to a company, they have committed to do that cross-pollinization, if you will, is to, to put their business leaders into the classrooms. In fact, they're, they're eager to do that. And then similarly, to offer opportunities for internships and, and do it in a very unique, coordinated way across the region so that we can touch all, not just the Folsom Schools for Intel and Roseville Schools for Hewlett-Packard, but to open it up wide. So it's important, not only, again, at the junior high, high school level, but also what we're finding is, as excellent as UC Davis are, is, and, and Sacramento State, and even Chico, and I throw Chico in because Intel recruits more engineers from Chico programs than any other institution of higher learning in the U.S., and we're going to go ahead and, and grab them into our region as well, because that's a talent base that we can, that we can claim as well. We're going to do a better job of introducing at the professor level and at the dean level those professionals to the professionals within our business community. Because what we're finding is those Because what we're finding is those students are graduating, looking for jobs, and they have no connection whatsoever to the Sacramento region and the companies that are here, and they're taking jobs elsewhere. I mean, some, the simple things like the city of Columbus has a rather unique thing where they, with the university bus system, they, they connect, the university, you have to have an ASB card to get on the bus, but it goes through what would be the equivalent of our Midtown or, and drops students off there, and then comes back to campus and does this over a period of time to connect the students with what's going on in their communities, not just on their campuses. So it's everything from doing that connectivity with the businesses that's so needed, but also connecting them socially and recreationally and culturally with the region. That was a long answer, I'm sorry.
No, it's helpful. It's hard to do, it's complicated. So I'm just curious, what, you know, what are the things that you guys are thinking about doing? Because it is so important. I mean, we're gonna blink, and what we're studying today is obsolete tomorrow. I mean, so I'm just trying to figure out, how do you make that connection with early education to the next economy?
Right, right.
Thank you.
All right, well, I'm really supportive of the regional effort that's going on here. One of the issues you have to approve the regional business climate for economic growth, and the resolution we're adopting tonight is basically to authorizing the city manager to engage in shaping our economic development plan. How is this gonna look in terms of the regulatory reform? You know, and how that's gonna fall, how that is gonna flow down to local, all the local jurisdictions? I know there's, there's talk of advocacy and working with electeds on these issues, but is there going to be a process of identifying some consistencies and regulatory schemes that seem to work better than others and make recommendations along those lines?
Yeah, I think everything's on the table. So it's not only looking at the timelines for permitting and regulatory hurdles within the region, but also at the state level, and definitely taking a more proactive approach to impacting regulatory change, so it's more business-friendly. The Metro Chamber of Commerce will be taking the lead on the public policy and advocacy piece, and I think we have yet to figure out what the correct body is to engage the local jurisdictions. I'm mindful of the fact that SECOG exists and you all gather there on a regular basis anyway, so that seems logical to me. But that's something that will, will be worked out as we get down, get down the line pretty, pretty quickly, not, not a long-term down the line, but pretty quickly, because that's probably the most impactful piece of this whole plan, is getting that right and moving the dial on the business climate.
I would agree. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ernesto, do you have anything else? All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution, self-recommendation? Motion, Mr. Kristoff, second, Mr. Vias, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right, on to council calendar.
Mayor, council members, next week is the fireworks sellers' information night. It's been a big event. That's gonna be on Tuesday evening on the 26th. Not on your calendar is an event that we heard about today. It's the police fire recognition event. That's March 27th, so we'll include that on next week's calendar, but it's not on there tonight, but you may wanna note that. We're also working with Senator Steinberg's office. We've talked about this in the past, about a tour in West Sacramento, trying to find a Friday that works for him. Just wanna let you know, we're still working on that. We're now in May, so we're looking at May 3rd for the senator, and so as soon as we get a date, we'll let you know. We're moving it out.
Thank you. City Attorney report, or City Manager report?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay, City Attorney? Okay. Staff direction from council members? None? No? Mr. Kristoff? All right. Any future agenda or request by council? No? Is there a motion adjourned? Second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, motion adjourned.